Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of October 27, 2015. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the holiday flowers they're supplying this evening. The roll call, please, Carol.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Dennis Salmon, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of announcements this evening that aren't in the agenda. The Halloween Happenings, October 30th, will take place at a Tanfran Mall, Barnes &amp; Noble to begin, and at 4:30 there'll be a raffle and drawing downstairs in the center of the mall, so you're all invited to attend. Also, it is red ribbon week, so that's why we all have our red ribbons on this week. Hope everyone participates in that. And the San Bruno VA Clinic, it's a little premature, but they're going to have, November 23rd, 2015, a celebration of 10 years of service. It's the VA Clinic, it's right off of Sneeve Lane, and I'll give you an update on that in November 10th meeting. And then, understand, I got an invitation today that everyone's invited to attend. A thank you gathering for John Coretti, for his myriad activities he's participated in over the years to help others, especially veterans. This Sunday, November 1st, at the American Legion Post on 757 San Mateo Avenue, from 3:30 to 5:30. Takes care of our announcements. Presentation, the first presentation, we're going to present a proclamation supporting no-traffic-ahead program and taking a stand against human trafficking in the Bay Area before the 2016 Super Bowl and beyond. And I'll read this and I'll present this to Chief Barbarini. No traffic ahead, whereas the crime of human trafficking is present in every country and every U.S. state, and whereas the state of California and its constituent communities are considered to be receptor sites for trafficking due to economic conditions and proximity to international borders, and whereas forced labor, commercial and sexual exploitation, and involuntary domestic servitude have been found to exist within local communities, and whereas the FBI has identified the San Francisco Bay Area as one of the top 13 sites for child sex trafficking in the country, and the National Human Trafficking Hotline receives more calls from California than from any other state, and whereas the 2016 Super Bowl provides an opportunity for cities and counties in the Bay Area to ramp up their efforts to respond to human trafficking, and whereas by engaging our hotels, restaurants, other businesses, and the general public to take a stand against human trafficking, the San Francisco Bay Area can be a model for how we can all work together to tackle human trafficking. Now therefore, I, Jim Ruane, the mayor of the city of San Bruno, hereby proclaim that San Bruno is taking a stand against human trafficking in San Bruno before the 2016 Super Bowl and beyond, and ensures that San Bruno's police department personnel will participate in available human trafficking training. I'll present this to Chief Barbarini, and he will introduce Mr. Brosnan, who will have something else to say.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. San Bruno Police Department has actually been a partner in the human trafficking campaign since its inception a few years ago. This is an area that is susceptible to this type of behavior, and we've been proud to be part of the effort to combat it since the beginning. One of our detectives, Gene Wong, has been instrumental in not only sustaining the program but being part of the original group to put it together. Recently, the county's developed a more formal countywide effort, and doing so, they've appointed a countywide human trafficking prevention coordinator. Recently retired Deputy Chief Mike Brosnan from the South San Francisco Police Department is now in that position, and he's here to speak to the program and some upcoming events.
Thanks, Chief. City Mayor Ruane, Vice Mayor Salazar, Honorable members of the San Bruno City Council, thank you for allowing me to address you as a part of this proclamation. I want to congratulate the city of San Bruno for joining the cities of Belmont, South San Francisco, San Carlos, San Mateo, Menlo Park, Half Moon Bay, Daly City, Pacifica, Burlingame, East Palo Alto, Milbrae, Redwood City, and the county board supervisors for taking a stand against human trafficking. This pre-Super Bowl proclamation highlights the positive relationships between the city of San Bruno and the San Bruno business community. We've partnered with your Chamber of Commerce to help raise awareness and to market upcoming training. I also want to thank Chief Barbarini and the rest of his team for their commitment to this area. You heard real quick how involved San Bruno was as we started this venture several years ago, and Chief Barbarini continues to lead his team in this fight. Your resolution cites the National Hotline on several occasions. The National Hotline number is 1-888-3737-888. That's a odd format, however, it's an easier one to remember. That's 1-888-3737-888. As for training, every member of your hotel and hospitality industry has been invited to the South San Francisco Conference Center on November 6th, Friday, November 6th, for a morning of instruction. These hotel and hospitality professionals could be our eyes and ears, our future reporting parties and witnesses. We look forward to providing them with the tools to recognize human trafficking and the confidence to report it. I have submitted a flyer to your clerk, just in case any of you want to join us on the morning of Friday, November 6th. It's 8:30 to about noon block of instruction. We've partnered with the Sandra Day O'Connor Institute of Justice out of Phoenix, Arizona. They have a pre-Super Bowl initiative in this area to train hotel and hospitality. So once again, I want to thank you for your leadership, and I want to thank you for allowing me to participate this evening.
Thank you very much, Mike. Yes, very important issue, especially with the Super Bowl coming around, so it's, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Our next presentation is, we're going to receive a presentation regarding the San Mateo County 21 Elements Affordable Housing Nexus Study, and I'll give this to Connie Jackson, who will introduce Josh Abrams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, San Bruno, like our fellow cities in San Mateo County, participated in the county-coordinated 21 Elements Program, which started with the update of all of our housing elements, which has now been completed by San Bruno and others. And as this process has moved forward, a next order of business is a thoughtful review of a number of issues associated with the urgent imperative in all of our communities to develop and provide for affordable housing. Mr. Abrams, who is going to be speaking tonight, is a contractor to the county who's coordinating the 21 Elements Program, and the presentation tonight is on the work that that program is doing around housing nexus evaluations, commercial linkage, and affordable housing impact fees. This is one of the strategies that others in the county are using to promote the development of affordable housing. This is a broad area, there are many different topics to be considered, and our intent tonight is to provide you with a background presentation to this important topic. We will be coming back to the city council, and we hope that Mr. Abrams will join us again for a more detailed discussion-oriented program, once we have information that's now being developed for us that will recommend specific impact fees for San Bruno. We hope to have that information within the next week, and we look forward to bringing this topic along with other affordable housing development and provision strategies to you within the next several months. So with that, I'll introduce Mr. Abrams, and he has a PowerPoint presentation that he'll walk through with you.
Great, thank you very much. Excited to be here, I appreciate you taking the time to discuss this important issue. If you want to move to the next slide. Did it advance?
Next, no.
It's advancing on his computer, for those who don't see.[573.29][573.29](Laughter).
Why don't you go ahead and continue with the commentary?
Okay, great, sure. So I'm just going to start real quickly with a little bit of background about affordable housing and the need. Talk some about what we're calling the Grand Nexus Study, the methodology, and some of the fees that are coming out. Other cities have their recommendations, San Bruno should have it soon, and talk real briefly about next steps. The good place to start is 21 Elements. 21 Elements is a multi-city collaboration of all the cities in the county about housing policy. Staff people who work on housing policy get together to discuss both housing policy and housing planning. We helped all the cities write their housing elements, and we're now helping with some implementation projects where there's common interest between the cities about a housing policy. We'll help research or bring model language. So this, in the next year, we'll be looking at policies to promote second units, anti-displacement policies, and of course, impact fees, and short-term vacation rentals. We don't try and force cities to do anything, it's just providing best practices, options cities can learn from each other, and also help them learn from people outside the region. So there's a couple of trends that really bring affordable housing to the forefront. And rather than talk about the percentage increase in housing prices, one, a different way to think about it is actually look at one sample San Bruno home. It's not actually the one pictured, but it's in Pacific Heights, and I traced its history from, it was built in the 1950s, but just the cost of what it sold for over the decades to see how it's changed. And I corrected all the money, so they're in $20,15. So if I say you needed $50,000 to buy the house, that's 50,000, that's equivalent to today. So why don't we click, in 1975, it's as far as I could go back, and I kind of had to triangulate there, the home sold for the equivalent of $187,000, and you could make $50,000 basically and buy a home in San Bruno. And then what you see is, over time, from 1990, you would need, so back in 1975, a teacher could buy a house just on one income. By 1990, a teacher or a lot of professions wouldn't be able to buy, you would need to be a two-income house. So by 1990, for the same house, you would need to make almost $120,000. And more recently, it's jumped up to $200,000, you would need $200,000. So that's one of the trends, that's the driving, the interest in, the concern about affordable housing, this rapid increase in prices or a steady increase over time. Another trend is the loss of middle-income jobs. We've had a great economic recovery, which is really good, but you see the area, the jobs in red are middle-income jobs, and they both crashed the hardest during the recession and have recovered the least post-recession. So we're producing a lot of high-income jobs and a lot of lower-income jobs, but in the middle, it's getting harder to find middle-income jobs. And then the third trend is, there's a fair number of constraints on affordable housing policy. The inclusionary housing was limited, so you can't apply it to rental development. With the loss of redevelopment agencies, you lost a lot of funding also for affordable housing. So that's one of the things that's driving the interest in impact fees. So what we did, one of the interests is in impact fees, and in order to do an impact fee, you have to do a nexus study first. A nexus study looks at the relationship between the new development and the need for new affordable housing. Typically, each city would do its own nexus study, each city would work in isolation, and we, through 21 Elements, we gathered all the cities together that were interested and had them all jointly hire a consultant to do nexus studies. So each city got their own individual report based on city conditions, but because the economies of scale, the cost rather than being probably closer to $50,000 or $60,000, each city paid $15,000. So with the good deal and with the need for affordable housing, you actually see really great participation. This is a list of the cities that participated. Couple of cities did their own, and all the cities, except for the small towns where there's really no new housing or new job growth, ended up participating. If you want to do the next slide. So of the over 700,000 people in the country, all but 23,000 will live in either participating jurisdictions or jurisdictions that already have impact fees. One more, just graphically, it's 97%, so that's about what it looks like. It's a very strong movement towards the use of impact fees. So I'm going to go over some impact fee basics. The idea with an impact fee is it's a charge on new development to fund capital infrastructure, in this case, affordable housing. So all new housing or jobs would pay for the, pay a charge, it would go, the fees would be paid, they'd go into an affordable housing trust fund, and that money would be used to buy, to build new affordable housing. And if you can click one more time, before that can happen, you have to do, it's legally required that you do a nexus study that really, that documents that relationship and shows exactly how much you can charge. So the Grand Nexus Study calculates the new fees, and the idea here is, again, it's on new development, and to mitigate the impact of that new development, we studied both commercials or new jobs and what their impact is, and new housing. It's customized for each jurisdiction, if you want to click on that. Wherever possible, we use local data. Each city got their own report, and wherever possible, again, we put in local, we put in local information. The residential linkage fee, the idea is that new residential development, there'll be jobs associated with that new development, and some of those jobs will pay low-income wages. So it could be landscaping or childcare, or it could be food service jobs that'll come if you have new growth, and so the market's not providing new affordable housing, so you look at what the need associated with those new jobs are to figure out how much housing is needed. And with the commercial, it's a similar idea, but it's just one step shorter. You look at new commercial development and the salary of those, of the employees, and then the new affordable housing need based on that. We also did a feasibility study. A feasibility study helps set the fees, so the nexus study will do the legal maximum, but most cities won't want to charge the legal maximum, and a feasibility study will tell you what level you can put the fees at without adversely impacting development. So development can still happen even though some fees are paid. So that's, it's kind of a balancing act to come up with a feasibility study. And again, the goal is to make sure new development still is possible in the city, because if there was new development, you wouldn't get any fees to start with, and it would defeat the purpose of doing the impact fees. The number of policy considerations go into figuring out what the fee should be. One is the feasibility, also you can look at your existing fee structure, you can look at what your neighboring cities are doing, you can think about your affordable housing objectives. Some cities will want to set the fee higher and give developers the option of actually producing a unit instead. Some cities prefer to have the money in their trust fund, so they can issue a RFP and have, kind of, use outside leverage to get a little more. And you want to, if you do a commercial and a residential fee, you want to make sure that you're still under the maximum, because there would be the potential to double count. So the study looks and makes sure there's not, that you don't double count. Looking at some of the neighboring cities, for residential, they're often around $20 a square foot. Some of the cities have been increasing it because of the strong economy. So a couple of cities lately have done $17 a square foot. Redwood City just passed it last night, and they were, I think, 15 to 20, but I'm not sure the numbers that Redwood City did. And then next slide, commercial fees tend to vary a little more, but often also cluster somewhere around that 20 for the stronger, the cities with a stronger market. So the draft results from the study, this is from all the cities, not San Bruno. San Bruno's report will be out probably in about the next week, but the maximum fees tend to be pretty high, up to $80 for residential, but the recommended are a lot lower. They're often kind of in the 15 or 20 or $25 range, in a few cases, up to $50. And then for commercial, the nexus maximum is really high, often over 100, and the reasonable fee is a lot lower. You'll see that the office climate in most cities is a little stronger, so it can justify a higher fee, or it can support a higher fee, but the retail and hotel, the market's not as strong, so the feasibility numbers are a little lower for that. One of the most common questions I get asked is about the impact of fees on new development, if builders will just push that, those prices, if they have to have an additional fee, if they'll just push it on to homeowners and increase the price of housing for everyone. It's something that's been studied a lot in a lot of different contexts, and economists pretty well agree that developers don't have the option to arbitrarily increase prices. If we want to go to the next slide and one more. So if you look at all the prices, all the homes for sale in San Mateo County, a developer, when they're pricing their unit, they have to compete against those 95% or 99% of the environments built at any one time. And if a developer arbitrarily increased their price $20,000, or $10,000, or whatever the fee is, they would have a hard time selling the unit. Everyone is, the developers have already built in the maximum price that they can, because they're good businesspeople, and they're not going to leave any room on the table. So what happens to those prices, what happens to those fees, where do they come out? According to economists, they come out in land prices, and I'll go through a real simple model. So assuming that the retail price for a house and the sales price is $100, and that's obviously determined by the market, so that's a fixed, that what a developer will do is they'll look at their construction cost here, $40, and their desired profit, $10, and whatever's left, that's what they'll offer to pay for land, so in this case, $50. They're not going to work for less than their desired profit, and they can't control their construction costs. So here, they have $50 to pay for land and still make their profit and make development happen. In the second example, we've increased the construction cost by $5, so the sales price is still controlled by the market, it's still $100. The construction and fees is now 45, the desired profit's 10, so now the developer can pay 45 for land. So they can't push it off to the, into the sales price, but you do have a concern that if your fees are too high, you can impact development. Developers just won't be able to buy land if the fees are too high, and they won't be able to compete. That's why it's really important to do that feasibility study. That tells you where to set that price, is it $5, or $10, or $20? Where can you set it and still have developers able to compete, buy land, make a profit, and sell their homes? And then, cities are moving forward very quickly. I mentioned that Redwood City adopted impact fees or moved forward with impact fees last night. A number of other cities in the next couple of months will be considering it. I don't know how it'll turn out, that's to be seen, but it's at least on the agenda of six or seven other cities in the next couple of months. And in terms of San Bruno, the next steps, well, I guess it's obviously to wait and get the results from the report, and I should say, a separate firm, Kaiser Marston, is doing those reports, but they should have the results out real soon, and then evaluate and decide what the housing policy is that makes the most sense for the city. 21 Elements is, here, 21's goal is to help support jurisdictions, so if there's a way that the city, the 21 Elements can be of assistance, we'll continue to help. And with that, I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Josh? Well, we sure need affordable housing, so we look forward to our particular study and hopefully working with you in the future. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, thank you. Do you know what impacts the fees have had on other cities, how much affordable, how much they've collected and how much affordable housing? I believe San Jose has had significant and long-term development fees.
Sure. Mountain View, it really depends on how much development happens in the city. Mountain View collects, I think, about $10 million a year. I actually looked at the numbers of a development that's been approved or under construction in San Mateo County, so these are actually real projects that are moving forward, and looked at if all the cities applied impact fees comparable to their neighbors, say $20 a square foot for residential and $5 for hotel, or whatever the neighbors are charging. And then, so multiplied that, those two numbers, how much development has happened and what the fees are, and I actually, it would have been $477 million. It's such a high number, it's actually hard to believe, but there's so much development happening in the county right now that applying those fees is, and there's actually, and then, this is from the San Francisco Business Times, they had an article where they listed all the proposed under-construction or approved projects. And so that's one estimate. Another estimate is, they listed proposed projects, so proposed projects are obviously, they're less solid, but there's another $450 million in proposed developments that if they move forward, fees could be collected on them. So it's a lot of money, especially in this really strong development climate we have right now.
Okay, thank you.
So if I could also, I think it's a different question, but what is the environment with the development, development community? I mean, are they just accepting it and thinking, well, geez, as long as, as long as the business is booming, we'll pay it?
Yeah, so, right, it's a great question. So basically, whatever assumptions were put in the pro formas or when they bought land, the rents have outpaced those, so developers are very, very eager to move development forward quickly to, because in case things downturn, go down, they want to get it into the market now. Most cities that are moving towards impact fees, the building industry will send them a letter saying, we have legal concerns with this, we don't think it's a good policy, but then they'll also testify that if you do a fee compared with your neighbors, we feel like we can live with that. So that happened in Foster City and a number of cities, like, they kind of, there's two levels, like, don't do it at all, but if you do it, don't go over the top.
Great. All right, thank you very much. Review of the agenda, any changes? Okay. Item number six, approval of amendments of the regular city council meeting of October 13, 2015, any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none will be approved as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless requested. Anything on the consent calendar?
Move to approve, second.
Motion is second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, public hearings, we don't have a public hearing this evening. Item number nine, public comment, an item is not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting on any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council? Just tell us your name and street, please.
Okay, my name is Dennis Salmon, I'm the CEO of Articule Joe's, located 659 Huntington Avenue, San Bruno. I'm here tonight to speak because of my concerns about the upcoming possible El Nino that is, hopefully it does not flood us out like Noah's storm in here, but basically, city of San Bruno and that area has endured major storms. I can remember in 1957, I can remember this, I lived on Mills Avenue. Mills Avenue was flooded out, all the way up to Eastern Avenue was flooded, and the entire avenue's down to Seventh Avenue was underwater at that time. Storms revisited us every couple of years. '64, there was a major flood. In 1972, we were flooded out. It actually rolled water right through the business about a foot deep, in the front door, out the back door, on the 600 block. Naturally, this water extended all up and down the block, on Huntington Avenue, Mills Avenue, and the avenues were basically at that time spared quite a bit because of the train tracks running through the town created an unnatural levee. So '72, we had the floods, '84, we had major floods, 1990's, the most recent flood, the last one we had was December last year. We did not even expect that, so we took a major hit at that particular time. We did not think the storm, we thought everything was under control. The water rolled down the street, the water gushed up from the storm drains, and lo and behold, we flooded again. This time, it was kind of disastrous in here, we had several of our employees trapped in the basement. The watertight doors automatically closed, the door to the basement automatically, for the garage down below, closed, and it was shorted out. The water was rushing in, they were barely able to get out with their lives. We endured over a quarter of a million dollars damage at that particular time for this storm. The worst part is, we did not have insurance because National Flood refuses to insure us because we've collected so many times in the past, so graciously from them, in here. But I'm asking in here is, that the city in here, this time, if this is true in the predictions, that we could be faced with something like the city has possibly never seen. Hopefully, it won't happen, we can all pray this won't come about, but I think it behooves us to be prepared, because we're looking at something here. If we get a major storm in here that stalls out over San Bruno, you could flood. Remember, the storm waters I have seen in my life have been backed up all the way to Eastern Avenue, all the way down San Mateo, into part of the 500 block, and flooded the entire avenues. I don't know, I mean, this time, I'm just asking in here that somebody in the city, I realize you cannot respond to any of this tonight, but I'm asking some member of staff that the city could arrange it, to contact me and my fellow merchants in the area and the people affected in the area about what the plan is, if there is a plan, i.e., are you going to have a sandbag station set up? Is a city going to supply sandbags? Who, what is the magic number that we're going to call, that they will pick up the phone at 3:00 in the morning, as it says in here? But... But this is what I'm concerned about, that's what I'm asking in here, is someone to get in contact and that the city is very aware of this problem. Remember, this time you could have out the main intersections of Angus Avenue and San Mateo Avenue completely underwater, that no emergency vehicle will be able to transgress these intersections. Yes, they have pumps on it, where are you going to pump the water to? We have a problem. I wish to thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you very much, okay?
Thank you, Dennis. I know without getting into too much detail that the city's preparing a comprehensive plan and I'll just briefly let the city manager direct that to you.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As to an immediate comment that I can make, it is, it will continue to be our practice to provide sandbag availability for residents. At the current time, we're planning to have sandbags available at Fire Station Fifty-One on El Camino next door to City Hall, as well as at the Corporation Yard on Huntington. In addition, we plan to have a self-serve bagging station at the Corporation Yard and as conditions warrant, we may add one at the City Hall parking lot as well. It is a planning process and preparation work is actively underway through city staff. We would be happy to give a more comprehensive and formal update to the city council at a later meeting. But we would also be happy to meet with Mr. Sammett and I think the suggestion to have an opportunity to meet with the business community would be a good idea as part of our planning and preparation. We, like others in our region, are well aware of the predictions. We're watching the weather forecasts closely and in fact, I'm told that we're actually already in the El Nino cycle. So while it would be a good thing to see some rain, too much at one time is a problem. We're well aware of that and we will proceed accordingly.
Right, through the chair and I know, and thank you to the city manager. But if you can keep at least the council updated on what, meeting with the merchants and the association, the dates, the times and locations, which you already have, but something that we can post appropriately and keep us abreast sooner than later because November's about here and maybe the rain.
Thank you. Anyone else under public comment?
Marty Medina, Garden Avenue. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council staff and neighbors. There is less than one week left in this election. And for those that still have your ballots, you have until next Tuesday, November third, to have them postmarked or you can drop it off at City Hall. This election has been very informative for me. Along with an amazing group of volunteers, I have walked up and down across San Bruno and I've talked to numerous residents about their concerns. Whether it's the limited parking on their streets, the neighborhood speeding, potholes, sidewalks, our schools, our downtown, new development, affordable housing or unsustainable utility rate increases. Together with the community's input, we will address them and obtain some much-needed relief. I was a San Bruno Public Works Inspector for over ten years. I understand how our city works. And now we are at a crucial time as San Bruno continues the long and difficult task of rebuilding our infrastructure. We are on an unsustainable path of relying on the same method and the same ideas and more rate increases. San Bruno now has the second highest water rates in the Bay Area with ten percent increases coming over the next two years. I know we can do better. For those of you who are still undecided in this election, I hope you agree we need to do things differently if we are to obtain different results. We need new ideas and more input from the community. You have two votes for city council and I hope you agree, one of them needs to be placed with someone with new ideas and vision. Someone with the construction knowledge and hands-on experience to efficiently improve our infrastructure. Someone that shares your concerns and will work relentlessly for you. I am asking you for the opportunity to make San Bruno a better place for everyone. Please help me do so by voting for me, Marty Medina. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Hello, Mayor, City Council, fellow San Brunoites. My name is Bonnie Belfour, I live on Crystal Springs. And I'm here to address an idea, concept. It's quite interesting that Mr. Abrams had presented his study on new housing. And with the numbers presented, it would be interesting to know, of the forty-two thousand eight hundred and change people, of that number, how many rent? I'm here to offer a proposal, it's a flyer that's been circulating around, I've picked it up, I brought it with me. Rent control. I have contacted Jerry Hill's office, Jackie Spear's office, and they all say that it's really up to each individual city. The cost of living is on the low percent, what, one or two percent? And yet raises in rent have escalated beyond the pale. There is the local San Bruno librarian who had to move out of the city. She was very well-respected and because she could not afford the escalating rent, she's gone. How many other highly qualified, very capable, very hard-working people are we going to lose? A ten percent and higher increase in rent is inexcusable. So with that, I would like to propose that the city council, the mayor, address this issue so that these kinds of things can be brought to bear. There are areas, San Francisco has Measure A. I don't think Milbrae, but Richmond, Oakland, some portions of San Francisco have some rent control in their measure. It can be dealt with in a number of different ways. But if we don't stop the escalating time, I mean, the money that people are spending and trying to stay here, then this new affordable housing that's going to go, hopefully will go up. If most of the middle class have lost their space in the demonstration that was just given on the PowerPoint, where are they going to live? Are they going to live twelve hours away, drive in five hours away? I'm a professional and I live within forty-five minutes of where I work. However, I also work with people who live hours and hours away. So by the time they get to work, they're exhausted. And when they worked twelve hours, eight hours, whatever the timeframe is, to try to drive home can be very dangerous. So all I'm saying is, please, please consider the idea of rent control in San Bruno. Make it here, make it now. If not you, then who? If not now, then when? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ryan Merzney, Canes Avenue. I'd like to ask the council why you didn't get an appraisal for the Crossing Hotel site before you offered to give our land to a billion-dollar developer for one dollar? Will your honest and unbiased appraisal include an appraisal of the land for use other than a hundred and fifty-two-room hotel with a three thousand square foot meeting space for friends of the council? Google paid eighty-eight million dollars for two office buildings nearby. The voters approved that land for an office building in Measure E. Will the appraisal take that into account? The old El Camino Theater site sold for ten point six million dollars or two hundred and forty-three dollars a square foot. The Crossing Hotel is in a better part of town and is fifty percent larger. Will your honest appraisal include the space being used for an apartment building since the voters also approved the land for apartments? I've heard council members make the claim that the voters approved that parcel of land only for a hotel. I think that needs to be clarified. I personally voted for Measure E in two thousand and one. I looked up the wording. Nowhere in what I or anyone else voted for was there anything about subsidizing a three thousand square foot meeting space for friends of the council or two levels of underground parking or letting a billion-dollar developer have that land for one dollar? Would you please show me where we voted for that? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, well, I live on Princeton. I wanted to address the lateral sewer line issue that was voted on by the city council to somehow arbitrarily make it the homeowner's problem to repair all the way out to the sewer line in the street. I don't have the problem myself in my house, my grandmother who lives down on Atlantic, she's now passed away. Her sewer line is in dire need of repair and replacement. And in my attempt to try and assist her daughter in repairing this situation, I have run into an absolute, it's just incredible that the city can sleep at night and can legally do what they're doing. We got a permit to dig up the grass, we dug up the grass, we got to the sidewalk. We were told it's another six hundred bucks to get a permit to go further than that. Then we were told that the sidewalk and the little easement and the curb and all the way out to the street is no longer the city's problem, it's our problem to repair. And the entire problem is due to a city tree that is two feet away from where this line is. The city roots of that tree are in the pipe, it's been verified by two companies with cameras. And yet, they're telling me I can't touch the tree. This is the most ludicrous thing that the city council has, I can't even imagine how you guys came up with this conclusion. That you were just going to arbitrarily wash your hands of responsibility of the sidewalks and the easements and the curbs and the street and just throw it all on homeowners. Let me tell you something, the people on Pacific and Atlantic and that area down there, they can't afford eight, nine, ten thousand dollar repairs, okay? My grandmother lived there for sixty-five years and her daughter is still there. My grandmother's gone now. I want to say something about the city. First of all, the city attorney has been fabulous, you have very, highly respect him. We've had a couple of conversations with him, he's been nothing but professional. Dennis Bosch is another one I'd like to say absolutely, completely respect. He was very, very nice to me, very kind and very professional. He explained to me that he'd been to my grandmother's many times to try to explain to her, but he was talking to an eighty-year-old lady. She didn't understand what she needed to do to get this situation squared away. Now I find I'm in a situation where I don't know what to do. The city's tying my hands because they want me to do all this stuff, yet God forbid we touch that tree, which is causing the problems. Now, in the city ordinance that I looked up, it was clearly stated that years ago, this was taken care of. It was deemed that the city tree was causing the problems. It's a clay pipe, it's moist on the bottom, it's always moist on the bottom. The roots get in, they grow inside the pipe and it plugs up and backs up into the house. The city knows this, I'm not the first person that's, you know, you've heard this from. And I don't want to go on about my issues or the issues there. The thing that I just do not understand is how the city can just throw up their hands and say, "We are no longer going to be responsible for this." I wish I could do that in my life, I wish I could just throw up my hands and say, "Gee, I'm not going to be responsible for something anymore because I don't want to be." I know it's the easy way out, it's the inexpensive way out. I know it's very costly for the city, I understand that. But I just don't see how you can just throw your hands up and just wash your hands of it and expect people to pay eight, nine, ten, eleven thousand dollars and then go through the problem of cutting a street and a curb? And then you want the homeowner to worry about someone driving in or stepping in that hole? Come on, the whole thing is just ludicrous, it just makes no sense. And I have no idea how the city council came up with this decision and apparently it was fairly recently that it happened. And it just boggles my mind and then God forbid we touch that tree. I mean, it's ridiculous, I mean, so I fixed the thing and I can't touch the tree. You have to go back and revisit this. I know this was a recent decision that was made, it was not all that long ago. You have to go back and revisit this. This is just absolutely the most, I mean, I feel like I'm going up against a brick wall every time I'm trying to do something. So...
All right, we better wrap it up.
Yeah, with all that said, you know, I just, it's frustrating for me, it's very expensive. And I gotta say, I really appreciate the city attorney and how he's treated me and he's being fair with me and he's looking into whatever can possibly be done. I'm not expecting anything. I know the city, you know, you guys have washed your hands of it and I'm not expecting any. I appreciate his time and I appreciate Dennis Bosch's time and how nice he was to me. But you guys got to revisit it, it's just not right, it's not right, so...
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, move right on to item ten, conflict of business. We're going to receive an oral report on the city's youth after-school programs and summer and holiday camps.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Dee Cranitz, Recreation Services Supervisor. And it's my pleasure this evening to share with you how through the city council's leadership and creation of the after-school and camp programs, we have been able to touch children's lives by delivering safe, fun and quality programming. One of these programs is the after-school program. So while it's not uncommon for a school district to run an after-school program, it's uncommon for a city to run an after-school program and provide a quality, affordable and enriching program for the community. The programs are very diverse with participants and staff. The program started in two thousand and two at three elementary schools, Portola, Allen and Belair Elementary School, with seventy students total, seven staff and a total revenue of seventy-seven thousand dollars. Today, we deliver the program in two ways. And I want you to note that the program starts when the last bell rings until six P.M., Monday through Friday. So I want to start off with the after-school adventures program, also known as ASA. We house that program at Portola, John Muir, Rollingwood, El Crystal School, elementary schools, grades first through five and also at Parkside Intermediate School, grades six through eight. We have approximately thirty to seventy participants at each site and that is a fee-based program. We charge a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month per child. During the after-school adventures program, we offer homework hour, classic indoor-outdoor games, arts and crafts program, cooking, sports components and much more. The next program I want to talk about is our after-school education and safety program, the ACES program, which is housed at Belair and Allen schools. We collaborate with the school district, who is a recipient of a state grant and we are the third party who provides the programs at the schools. And also we host for grades first through fifth. We have approximately eighty-seven to a hundred participants at each school site. And the program is free of charge for families whose children attend Belair and Allen Elementary School. The program offers homework hour, educational and fun enrichment components such as, again, cooking and a technology component, which the children can use laptops and we have robotics that they can work with. And also iPads, we have a PE component, gardening. We offer social science enrichments and much more, the list goes on. And the leaders are very creative and they're very resourceful and they do their homework to provide these activities for the children. So there, right now, today, there are a total of four hundred and seventy-six participants in our after-school program, thirty-three staff and we generate over a half a million dollars in revenue. A constraint we see of the program needs and a demand that can't be met at this time is serving kindergarten. This is related to the lack of classroom space within the schools during the regular school day and kindergarten gets out earlier, around eleven-thirties, they, or December said eleven-thirty. Also, due to lack of availability of classrooms, we do have a waitlist at several of our school sites. So I'd like to talk about our summer camp programs. As you may know, our summer day camp program is housed in beautiful San Bruno City Park and at our Veterans War Memorial Genesium. And our popular traditional day camp program encompasses a variety of activities such as swimming, field trips. We have a specialized arts and crafts and sports component where we bring in special, rec specialists and instructors, I should say, who will work with the children during block times to get specialized instruction in, say, for example, soccer. specialized instruction in, say, for example, soccer, or possibly the children get to participate in softball for the first time or baseball. And also, arts and crafts, they get to get hands-on with different arts and crafts programs. And we all, and we have a weekly theme for each age group, and the children are divided into age-specific groups, and they are coed groups. And we serve that program for ages 3 1/2 to 13 years of age. Since its operational start in 2002, the program had 55 participants and 13 staff with a revenue of $100,000. Today, just this last summer alone, we served over 2,000 youth over 10 weeks. It's an all-time record high enrollment with approximately 225 to 250 campers per week over a 10-week program span. I just want to note that most cities, when they run their summer day camp programs, it's just over an eight-week operation. And again, this program this year brought in over a half a million dollars in revenue as well. Our holiday camp programs have increased with number of participants as well, and it runs similar to the summer day camp program, just minus the swimming component and the field trips. So I just want to take a moment to talk about the positive impacts of the programs. We continue to collaborate and build a positive relationship with the school district, principals, teachers, parents, and families in the community. We help increase the self-esteem and independence with our participants in a safe and supportive environment, and I want to give you an example of that. So we have children with special needs who do participate in our programs. We have one particular participant, and I could just picture him now. He has autism, and the parents were unsure at first whether or not they wanted to put him in the camp program, and we gave it a try. And at the time, he did not want to socialize with other campers. And our staff fosters friendship among the camp groups, and we do start off every week at camp, first off with icebreakers and team-building activities to engage the children, so that whether you're a 10-week camper, you're here all 10 weeks, we keep it fresh and exciting for those campers. But if you're just coming for a week, we want to make sure you're, you know, part of the group, part of the team. And so the rec leaders were able to encourage him to participate in the camp activities, and the other children were playing with him and helping him get acclimated. Since then, he's come back year after year over the last five years, and he'll be coming back next year. So also, I want to talk about how the department provides local volunteer employment opportunities. We train top-notch caliber staff, and it helps our, helps staff gain foundation skills such as teamwork, maturity, responsibility, accountability, and professionalism. So some rec leaders come into the department thinking that their careers are gonna be possibly something else, maybe possibly being an accountant, or maybe in the tech industry. But after their rewarding experience as a recreation leader and what they have gained from their experience, they tend to go on to a career path of teaching, maybe social services, recreation, and some actually go on to serve our country. So we do have year-round leader retention. We have 43 staff that make up the after-school and camp, summer camp program total. Due to the exceptional training, we also bring in specialized instructors. For example, we work with the school district, who has helped us bring in specialists to teacher staff to work with children with special needs. Our programs evolve by keeping up with the trends, and we have high enrollment and full capacity in most areas. We also provide parent feedback with online surveys. And last but not least, safety. We have an impeccable safety record and still in peace of mind, so participants are going home happy, healthy, and safe. So on behalf of all the staff who deliver the programs and myself, I want to thank you, to thank the council for your leadership and the opportunities for our growth and accomplishments.
Well, thank you very much. It's a, it's a program that's known far and wide, and the cool thing about it is you're helping to prepare kids for the future, and that's really important. I mean, you're right there where it really meets, the rubber kind of meets the road there with the kids going forward, and you set a foundation, so. And it looks like you're having a pretty good time doing it, too.
Oh, I sure do.
Connie?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, it was my pleasure to ask Dee to come here tonight after I had the opportunity a couple of months ago to hear her tell me from her own personal perspective about what she does and how it adds value to the city. I was extremely impressed, and having come from a recreation background myself, starting out in my career in that field and understanding the importance that it, that these programs offer, not only to the community and to the youth themselves, but to us as a society. I thought it would be useful, this is obviously not an action item tonight, it's just one of those things that we wanted to make sure that both you and members of the public who might be watching have an opportunity to hear from the inside a little bit about what it takes and what the programs are producing. Obviously, we have a wonderful track record of growth and development of the programs, and I think a conversation with any of our participants or our staff would reveal some really interesting insights about what the program really means and how it has enriched lives, built careers, and made a tremendous contribution overall. Dee herself is a product of our leadership training program, starting as a much younger woman. And she's only one of...
She's still young.
She is, yes. But many of our staff actually have gone on to very rewarding careers after beginning as young students, as volunteers and recreation leaders in our programs. It's one of the sort of unsung success stories of what this type of program does for its community. So thank you very much, Dee, for being here tonight.
And I'm gonna jump in there because I don't believe in, I couldn't be prouder because Dee's been here a long time and seen it develop. And just thinking, looking down at Irene, 20 years ago, none of this existed. And it was Irene's leadership when she came on the council, and she grabbed me by the neck and said, "You're gonna help do this, and we're gonna take care of the youth." And we got a youth committee together, and the issues were, we need after-school care. And then we need, we need a summer program because all our kids, all our families are going to Millbrae. Now you're getting Millbrae kids coming to San Bruno. And because I drive through that park, and I've said it many times, summertime, when you drive through the park on a beautiful day and you see all these kids, you know, doing activities and everything, it just gives you that great feeling that this is a great place to live and bring up your family. So thank you so much. We need, because of the new website coming out, we need that to be one of the first features to really highlight what's great about San Bruno. Thank you so much.
To the chair. I know it was just an oral report, and thank you, but I would have, I would like to see, as to go off what Ken's saying, because, so it is in the packet of some sort, put it on our website. I think because it's interesting facts and numbers that, of course, you're explaining, for me to regurgitate it back to somebody who asked me the question, I don't have it. So I think oral reports are great in their presentation, but I'd love to see the follow-up information so that we have it and it's noted, so people can look back and see where we've been, where we've gone, where we're gonna go. And, and yes, Dee and your brother were rec leaders, and I remember those days way back then, and so, or Julie Calle, who was instrumental in painting the school district, was once a rec leader here and became a teacher in the San Bruno Park School District because she found her passion. So it has evolved this community to where I see young people now are turning 40, who were kids when I was a rec leader or within the rec program and working for the city of San Bruno. So it's amazing to see how much it does play into the community and how you still see them come back home, and a lot of them have stayed here in this town and called that home and are raising their families. So I think it drives a bigger part of who we are in this community, and it affects so many people as they grow up, and for those that get touched and get the bug as far as wanting to give back and be a part of that in their life and for what they experienced, now be on the other side of it. So again, love to see the information down for us, and thank you for the report.
Great. Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with West Coast Associates to update the urban water management plan in the amount not to
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. As part of the Urban Water Management Planning Act, in California's Water Code, water suppliers that provide 3,000 acre feet of more than 850 million gallons of water annually or serves more than 3,000 connections are required to prepare and update the urban water management plan. And the plan is updated every five years to assess the reliability of water source over a 25-years' horizon. And it is important because it evaluates the long-term water resource planning to ensure that adequate water supply is available to meet existing and future demands. The plans also require for agencies to be eligible for Department of Water Resources administered state grants, loans, and drought assistance. So five years has quickly gone by since the city last completed the Urban Water Manage Plan back in 2011, which the city council adopted. To complete the current updated plan, staff sent requests for proposals to five engineering firms and also advertised it on the city's website back in August. Three proposals were received from two Bay Area firms and one Southern California firm. The proposals were then reviewed and evaluated based on the manpower allocations, the project managers and teams' experience, and the firm's qualifications with preparing the urban water management plan. West Coast Associates is being recommended since the team members proposed for the project have completed more urban water management plans than other firms. One team member alone dedicated to the project has managed or participated in over 15 plans for various agencies within the Bay Area in comparison to other firms that completed less than 10 plans for their proposed project team. The city staff also reviewed the labor effort and overall costs for West Coast to ensure that the firm is effective and efficient in completing the plan. Staff contacted West Coast and negotiated their costs, which they reduced by approximately 10%. West Coast Associates completed city water master plan as well and has knowledge of the city's water infrastructure. And they also completed urban water management plan for other public agencies throughout California, such as the Cozy County Water District, Dublin San Bruno Services District, and cities of Fresno, Modesto, Sacramento, San Jose, and Mullen. Some of the scope of work for the plan includes reviewing and updating the water demands and demand factors, analyzing customers' consumption for indoor and outdoor use, evaluating different water system sources, developing water shortage contingency planning, preparing the draft and final urban water management, and attending public meetings and hearings and council meetings. As for the project's schedule, staff is estimating the update would take approximately five to six months to complete. And once the plan is completed, staff will come back to council to adopt the plan following a public notification and public hearing process. Then it will be submitted to the Department of Water Resources for review to fulfill the requirement in the Urban Water Management Planning Act. And this document is due in July of 2016. As for fiscal impact, it's, the budget is included as part of the operating cost for $80,000 that's been allocated in there, and the cost for West Coast Services for $71,800 is within the allocation. If you'd have taken any questions?
Any questions of staff? Any action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Verlaine.
Aye. Item 11, report of commissions, boards, and committees to our attorney this evening. Comments from council members? Irene?
Thank you. I just want to alert people that the Beautification Task Force members and associates went around the city this last week and took pictures of all the different Halloween displays, and we put them all together, and Miriam put them on Channel 1, so they are on a variety of times between now and Saturday. And if you want to know exactly which times, the schedule is on Channel 1, the menu. And also, they'll be played all day on Saturday. So we have over 100 photos from people all over the different parts of the city, and we hope you enjoy what you see. Thank you.
Rico?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that the website was, correct me, staff, that was rolled out today. Tammy, is that correct? The website was rolled out today? So I was already on it this afternoon, and I understand maybe there's one or two, there's some things that need to be finalized, but I do want to acknowledge that that is something that I am always most proud of when the city staff comes together in the various departments, works together, and actually is taking the ownership. And I know a lot, there's been a lot of outside assistance and/or collaboration, but honestly, it's come from the staff, from the various departments who have worked together, come up with a vision, and has made a huge difference to when I opened it today, to see what it was to what it is. And so I personally would like to know each of the persons who are on the city staff, who were instrumental and on the committee and helped make this a reality.
Thank you. Anything else? Closed session? We don't have a closed session this evening. And prior to adjournment, everyone have a happy and safe Halloween. So see you here on November 10.